So, thank you, everyone, for being here. I'd like to call to order the Cumberland School Committee on Thursday, June 6th, 2024 at 7:08 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I need a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Collins. Second by Mrs. Rogalski. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes four to zero for the record. Mr. Fiorello, Mrs. Feather, and Mrs. Vogel could not be here tonight. Next item on the agenda is Student Government Activities Report Year in Review. You can come up to the microphone.
Good evening, everybody. I was recently elected to be President of next year's student body in the student government. So with me is the rest of the board. So, all these wonderful folks behind me were also elected to our board, so we'll be the ones that you guys get to hear from every month. And I'm going to start off our year in review by covering September. We started off the year with our freshman elections and Spirit Week. We were able to officially get the freshman students excited about running and having a role in their class. As for Spirit Week, we had several successful events, including Class Clash, Powder Puff, trivia, hallway and banner decorations, and homecoming. We also had different themes throughout the week where the students dressed accordingly. Our goal in organizing these events for these students to connect and bond through healthy and friendly competition. Between the events and daily themes, our Clipper pride was more than reflected. And we're already planning for next year where it's going to be even better.
Hi, everyone. My name is Audgie Lambert. I'm the newly elected Vice President of Student Government. And throughout the month of October, our student government representatives and advisors organized our highly anticipated annual Philat Truck fundraiser located just outside of Ciabro on Mendon Road. In total, we collected so many non-perishable goods that the Monastery Senior Center gave away the largest baskets of food they have ever delivered for both Thanksgiving and even Christmas. Thank you. Our second and final event for October was our Homecoming Dance hosted in our very own wellness center. The Homecoming Dance triumphed over the turnout of previous years as we sold tickets to over 700 students. Profits were evenly allocated by student government to every grade level involved in the process. Thank you.
And then next up was December, which was dominated by our annual Adopt a Family fundraiser and our student government Christmas party. Working with Melinda Acosta and John Johnson from the Happy Basket Program, we collected over 150 gifts and necessities for local children in need. Those gifts went directly to kids that live in Cumberland and the surrounding towns, and we were able to shop for what they said, what they told us was the hardest group to shop for, which was pre-teen girls who, on Christmas, often don't have the things they want, so that was our job. And we got to put a lot of smiles on kids' faces during the holiday season.
Hi, everyone. I'm Sophie Tebow, and I'm the newly elected treasurer. In January, we successfully hosted our annual winter ball dance at the Wright's Chicken Farm. We had a great turnout, and the profits were allocated to the different classes. Also in February, a few of our student government leaders took a short field trip to BF Norton Elementary School to read stories to young students and encourage them to find more of an interest in reading. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lillian Souza, and I am Cumberland High School's Publicity Coordinator. In the month of March, which marked the beginning of our annual Pennies for Patients fundraiser, over the course of a few weeks, our A3 classes competed against one another, each aiming to raise the most money to win a free breakfast provided by student government. In addition, the sophomore and freshman class hosted their Spring Fling Dance on March 31st, which was in the planning process for a majority of the school year. This event served as a fundraiser for both classes to save up for larger events in the future, such as prom.
Hi, my name is Grace Lambert, and I'm the newly elected Charity Coordinator of Student Government. From the beginning of April to the end, we planned and eventually hosted a bowling tournament at Walnut Hill Bowl Alley to raise even more money for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. Before the actual day of the tournament, local businesses alone sponsored over $1,500. The event was an overall success, and the teams had a great time, and we raised over $2,000, making it the most raised ever in student government history for a fundraiser.
My name is Emma Guerra, and I'm going to be this year's Social Media Coordinator for Student Government. In May, we organized a clothing fundraiser for Fuller Hospital, which is ongoing and ends tomorrow. We have been encouraging our peers to donate any extra clothes they might have. Our purpose with this fundraiser is to provide clothing for teens and young adults who are receiving care at Fuller, doing what we can to help make them feel comfortable and supported during their stay.
My name is Rose Tomisso, and I'm the Senior Class President. Briefly before June started, we had the Junior Prom at Pleasant Valley Country Club on May 25th, which was Candy Land themed. Also, almost 250 students attended the event, making it a huge success. Coming up this Saturday is the Senior Prom at Quinesic Country Club. We hope that our seniors will have the best time while ending their senior year on a good note. We would also like to thank the class advisors for both grades. Seniorita Chadborn, Ms. Loizell, Mrs. Miller, and Mr. Cardozo for their hard work and creativity while planning the proms.
Thank you all for your time. Enjoy your summer, and we'll be back here before you know it in September.
Thank you very much to everybody on Student Government for donating your time throughout the year and for being here tonight. And it sounds like you broke a lot of records this year, so Sam, you and your team have a lot going to amp it up for next year now, too. So, congratulations. Next on the agenda is Report Out of Executive Session Meeting on May 8th, 2024. Actually, sorry, next on the agenda is Personnel Announcement. Sorry. Oh, my goodness. Next on the agenda, wow, that Student Government just sent me on a whirl. Next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Approval of Minutes from the Regular Meeting, 5/8/2024. Approval of Minutes of the Executive Session, 5/8/2024. The School Bus Inspection Reports, 5/3/2024. The Enrollment Report, 6/1/2024. The Transportation Reports, 6/1/2024. And the Residency-Turancy Report from 6/1/2024. I need a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Motion by Mrs. Rogalski. Second by Mr. Collins. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes four to zero. Next on the agenda is Personnel Announcements. Mrs. Dreszek.
Good evening. Tonight, we have two personnel announcements. We have two resignations effective on June 30th, 2024. Elena Shambrello, Speech Language Pathologist for the District, and Angela Griswold, a paraprofessional at Garvin School.
Thank you, Mrs. Dreszek. Next on the agenda is Report Out of Executive Session Meeting on 5/8/2024 and 6/6/2024. Item one is Report Out of Executive Session Votes. First, from 5/8/2024, we authorize legal counsel to defend actions brought by the architecture firm against Cumberland School District. We unanimously authorize legal counsel to move ahead with that. And tonight, we had only one vote tonight, which was a vote to uphold the appeal of the stolen key fob, and that was also unanimous. So, there were no other votes taken. The next item on the agenda is a vote to seal the minutes of the executive session. Motion by Mr. Collins. Second by Mrs. Rogalski. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes four to zero. Next on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report.
Madam Chair, good evening. It's great to have a full house tonight for this first topic. Principal Carter, please join me to announce this. Every year, we go through a process to select the Teacher of the Year. We get folks nominated from each building. We have a process to vet these folks and go through them. And this year, the Teacher of the Year is from Garvin Elementary. So, a big round of applause. We're going to announce the winner.
Thank you for inviting me to speak tonight to celebrate our district teacher of the year. I have been here quite a few times this year celebrating, but this is one of the most exciting. And I'm really glad that we have such a great audience tonight because this is something that deserves some great attention. When I first started teaching, I was a substitute, and I picked up a variety of different jobs just trying to dip my toe into the profession. And early on, I tried subbing in a kindergarten classroom. Within the first five minutes of my day, a student got sick all over my shoes, and it was pure chaos. I left at the end of the day feeling defeated and exhausted. But I also knew and recognized that it takes a very special type of person to take on the role of teaching kindergarten. So, this year's district teacher of the year is that special type of person. She takes on the kindergarten challenge with grace, style, and humility. Gina Palazzo Campopiano, better known in the Garvin community as Mrs. C., is an inspiration to everyone who enters her classroom. She works tirelessly to ensure that her students have the foundational skills to become lifelong learners. Her rigorous academic expectations and her nurturing approach to learning sets her students up for success. Students in Mrs. C.'s class are given individual support and attention to help them grow. Mrs. C. fosters independence and exploration to engage students in learning. This year, her students have published their own writing in a book. And once their work is complete, Mrs. C. is inviting parents to attend an official book signing with author readings. Mrs. C. is a welcoming presence in our school, and her classroom is open to all. Whenever our former superintendent, Bob Mitchell, would visit Garvin, I would get a text from our secretary letting me know he was in the building. But I never had to ask where he was because his first stop when he came to Garvin was always Room 9. It's now Room 117 because he was so drawn to the work that Mrs. C. did. Everyone is excited to visit and learn from Mrs. C. As her students advance through Garvin, they still come back to her to say hello in the mornings because of her strong personal connections that she makes with each and every person. Mrs. C.'s dedication and commitment to the students at Garvin extend beyond the walls of her classroom. Each summer, Mrs. C. helps organize a kindergarten kickstart program for incoming kindergarten students who have not had school experience. She works with the kindergarten teachers to put on a two-week program to prepare students for the social, emotional, and academic transition into kindergarten. Throughout the school community, she is constantly volunteering to spearhead initiatives and pilot new programs. She does not shy away from a challenge and encourages solution-based decision-making. She considers all challenges as areas of opportunity and pushes herself to grow. When faced with an obstacle, she reaches out for guidance and support and is open to suggestions from her colleagues. Mrs. C.'s energy, enthusiasm, and passion radiate to all those around her. She inspires her colleagues with uplifting support and can add humor and positivity to any situation. So, I'm going to loosely borrow a quote about Ginger Rogers. So, sure, teaching is great, but don't forget that Mrs. C. can teach a roomful of five- and six-year-olds and do it in heels. She is truly a wonder. She's an invaluable member of the Cumberland School Department and is a true representation of teaching at its finest. So, congratulations to Mrs. C.
Okay, so I just want to read what's on this plaque. The Cumberland School Department, 2024 District Teacher of the Year, presented to Gina Palazzo Campopiano in recognition of your inspirational actions and excellence in educational leadership. You get the golden red apple.
And we also have a perpetual plaque every year, and we did get the full name on the plaque. It did fit. So, that'll go on the wall. So, if we can now introduce the 2024 Teacher of the Year to say a few words.
Thank you so much. This has been a really, really humbling experience. I am so grateful, so thankful, so appreciative, overwhelmed and shocked, as you can imagine. I'm proud to be a part of the great district of Cumberland. Thank you to administration for recognizing me for such a high honor. Special thanks to Mrs. Cotter. She's been a tremendous leader with all my ideas. She has listened to them, supported them, and guided me down the right path. So, I really need to thank her. To my wonderful Garvin family, it is a privilege and an honor to walk through those doors with you every single morning and to work with a group of educators who go above and beyond for their students 100% of the time. I've learned so much from each and every single one of you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I look forward to representing Cumberland in the state, and I hope I have plenty of opportunities to show them what Cumberland educators are made of. So, thank you. Thank you.
And now, we do have four retirees to acknowledge. For the first one, if I can call up Mr. Costa.
Good evening, everyone. So, just before we got started, a member of the student government walked up to me, and they asked, "When are we going to honor Ms. Loizell?" And so, Rose came up, and I said, "Well, Rose, the beginning of the school committee meeting will run rather quickly, but we'll be at it really quick." She goes, "Good." "'Cause I want to stay because she's my girl." And I wanted to share that all, I wanted to share that with you because what I've written about Ms. Loizell is really true. And I'm looking across the room now, and there is the members of the department recording this. This is how important Ms. Loizell has been to our community at Cumberland High School. It is a real honor to share a few words about Justine Loizell on behalf of the high school. She is truly a champion for our entire school community, and she will always be celebrated that way. I think one of the things she will be remembered for is embracing some of our struggling math learners, many of them seniors, and helping them get across that finish line. Each year, she is one of the more visited teachers at CHS as the relationships with her students are for a lifetime. The Cumberland School Department has been lucky to have her as an educator for more than 30 years of service. Usually, when you get closer to the end of your career, you begin to roll back attendance at events such as sports and dances. Not Justine, not only does she continue to support our students, this year, she is currently serving as Junior Class Advisor. Because she has a prior commitment, she recently told me that she was sad she would not be able to attend this year's senior prom, which would have been her last prom. Unless she comes back and visits, there will always be a seat at the table for you, Justine. I know her colleagues across the school, the math department, and especially her students will miss Ms. Loizell as she moves on and moves west to California to be with her family, which includes her two grandchildren. Thank you so much for being a part of our community for so many years. Congratulations, Justine.
Those of you who know me know I won't give up an opportunity to talk. I've been in Cumberland for over 30 years. I'm not from Cumberland. I'm from Warwick. But like I went, when I go to games, I am cheering for the Cumberland kids. And at this point in my career, I feel like I bleed blue. Whenever anybody asks me where they should move, I always say, "Move to Cumberland. They're the best schools in the state." And I am truly going to miss all of the friends that I've made here. It's been an amazing career. Thank you.
Next up, I believe we have Ms. Ded Malcom.
Hello, everyone. I didn't write anything down. I typically like to just talk off the top of my head. And the first person I'd like to recognize is Mrs. Lynn Mann. Lynn was a paraprofessional at Cumberland Hill when I started there, almost nine years ago, as the school principal. And the minute I walked in, the first thing Lynn said to me was, "What can I do? What can I do to help you? What can I do to help support the students?" Lynn worked in our I.Aim program, and there was nothing she was not willing to take on. She would step up if there was a student who was dysregulated. Lynn was the first one there. If there was a duty that needed to be covered, Lynn was the first one there. She was extremely reliable, and I just want to say, I know I have the fewest words tonight. It's kind of strange. I usually have a lot to say. So, Lynn, I just wanted to wish you all the best in your retirement, and congratulations. Come on up. You were, you were always the first one to do anything. Don't forget your bags. The next individual is Linda Rosasco. And as things evolve, Linda was our I.Aim Special Education Teacher in Grades 2 and 3. Actually, it used to be K1 and 2, and then it became 2 and 3. And when I was asked to speak about Linda tonight, my first thought was, "I'm going to talk about that connection a special educator has with their students and the impact that they have." And then something that illustrates that fell into my lap. Thank you, Brian, Linda's husband. This was a letter written to Linda by a former student. Dear Ms. Linda, I'm not sure if you remember me, but my name is Thomas, and you were my teacher in elementary school from 1993 to 1994. Recently, I decided to convert a bunch of old VHS tapes to digital format, and among those tapes, I found a video my dad made that was essentially dedicated to you and the principal. When I watched the video, it brought back many memories of how you helped me so much at a time in my life when many experts in the educational arena had more or less written me off and insisted that my learning disability would severely hinder any chance I had to succeed in life. My dad always says that people don't care how much you know until they know how much you care, and your earnest desire to see me improve every day meant the world to me. If you want to see the above-referred video, I put it on YouTube. Right? Everybody's a YouTuber. You'd get a kick out of it. I thought I should also let you know that due in part to your efforts and assistance in my formative years, I ultimately graduated from Stanford High, got my BA from Southern Connecticut. Oh, it gets better. In 2010, I graduated from Roger Williams University School of Law. I now work as a Special Agent for the FBI in the New York office. If someone had told my parents in 1993 that my life would turn out like this, I don't know if they would have believed it. But I speak for my parents when I express my deepest gratitude for your help and with hope your students never limit themselves. They should thank God that they have someone as invested in their success as you. Very respectfully, Thomas. Linda. Well, you're going to blame your husband for it. Congratulations.
And Michelle Carter, I'm sorry, with the last retiree. Apologies.
Hello again. Sue Marion couldn't be here tonight because we just came from her retirement party. So, I wrote two speeches tonight. This is my party speech. I'm not going to read that. So, I'll just put that off to the side. This is a more formal recognition of Sue Marion's career. Thank you for this opportunity to honor Sue Marion's amazing career with the Cumberland School Department. Many of us gathered earlier this evening to celebrate her 35 years of service, and so I was able to share a few words then, but I'd like to share a few words now. I have had the pleasure of working with Sue at Garvin for the past six years. Her high expectations and organized classroom structure has helped many of our second-grade students find success and build confidence in their academics. Sue's no-nonsense approach to teaching comes from a place of great care for all her students. She is data-driven and ready to go to bat for her students to ensure that they have the support that they need. Every decision that Sue makes throughout the year is with her students in mind. She is a fierce advocate for them and pushes them to be their best. Sue has made a lasting impression on our school and will be greatly missed. So, on behalf of the Garvin staff and students, I wish her the best. Congratulations, and I'm so thankful for everything that she has done. I told her that I would take her tote bag and bring it to her tomorrow, so I'll make sure that she gets it, I promise.
All right, Madam Chair. My last category for the night is the usual school construction update at Ashton Elementary. We are really starting now to turn the corner. Having done this now three years in a row, right, Cumberland Hill, Garvin, have a rhythm now with these kind of things. Now, you can see in the front of the building, this is a brand-new sidewalk just put in. This is the main area in front of the playground, all being demoed. It'll be retired. We now have parking in the middle of the island at Ashton, brand-new parking, and the flagpole has arrived, new flagpole with a solar light. Over here, we have new curbing as you go out, so we got that installed as well. Going inside, this is the main entryway. That's the secretary with the glass. That's almost in. The ceilings are going in, the arch is going in, in the large common area, and that's a shot of the addition. That's completely done, and Will's team has cleaned it, so it's looking sharp. And in case you didn't hear, the bridge got done. So, as I mentioned last month, we tried for years to get this done, and all of a sudden, the state called and said, "We're doing it, and we'll have it done by June 7th." So, we were very happy to have that done. We really appreciate it and thank all those folks in the state that had the bridge done. So, it looks fantastic. We have a new paint job. We have new fencing, so it's really sharp for our graduation. In terms of Ashton, it is on budget, on time, so we do expect everything to run smoothly with that. And no sooner do we finish Ashton, we start Community, so the cycle starts again. So, off we go. Any questions, Madam Chair, on construction?
Mrs. Rogalski?
Just a question on the trans building here being done for Community to increase. How is the construction going on the top floor with the locker rooms that are being converted?
The locker rooms, if you recall back in the day, we had a boys' and girls' locker room on the top floor of the trans. If you walk down to the girls' locker room, it is completely empty. The new flooring is in, and the vendor's been selected for the glass and the lighting, so that's moving along. On the boy's side, the smaller one, that's being emptied as we speak, and the flooring is next for that. So, that's on schedule. We'll gain two classrooms, basically, for that for next year.
And Dr. Thornton, I don't know if I missed it, but did you acknowledge why we skipped the acknowledgements?
I did not. Apologies. We did have some acknowledgements tonight for some music and... We did have some acknowledgements tonight for some music and for some sports. Unfortunately, those folks couldn't make it, so we're going to push those to a later meeting in June, so that's why.
Just want to say that Cumberland is a city of champions over and over and over again, if you look at this, but we wanted to make sure we could do this when they could come here in person. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Next on the agenda is reports of standing committees, starting with the Fiscal Management Subcommittee update. Mr. Collins?
Thank you. Good evening. The Fiscal Management Subcommittee met this evening. We have payment of the bills which were approved. We have 13 resolutions, and since we're in the middle of budget season, that's constantly evolving, so we were discussing the budget, and we're still waiting for the town to approve the final budget, but yeah, so get the resolutions and the bills to look forward to later, so stick around.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Next is Policy and Procedures Subcommittee update. Ms. Smith?
The Policy and Procedures Subcommittee did not meet. However, there's a lot on the agenda, and we are trying to work out a schedule where we can get this going. There had been some conflict with other meetings occurring, so hopefully we're going to get back on track over the next few weeks.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Same goes for the Achievement and Communications Subcommittee update that this committee also hasn't met, but we also need to get that one back on track. And then next is the District Health and Wellness Subcommittee update. Ms. Rogalski?
It's everyone's favorite time, but this is my last one until September because we're done after this. So we, that feels really loud. We met on May 23rd, had a few different topics. We got an overview of the new K-5 health curriculum that's going to be implemented next year called The Great Body Shop. It has had input from all of the nurses, the PE teachers, and the guidance, and a real team effort to do the curriculum mapping and the planning, and they are really excited about it. There's a focus on topics from injury prevention to substance abuse to nutrition and physical fitness, and each group is taking a different theme and different lessons to cover throughout the year, so that will be rolled out in the fall. We had an update from Project Strong. For those of you that remember, this was the program with Rhode Island Hospital and Bradley Hospital that Cumberland Middle Schools were participating in with boys and emotional regulation. They had a tremendous response from Cumberland, got a ton of families that came out to help them, and they have wrapped up their project and hope to have results in the fall of 2025. So we're looking forward to hearing about that. SEDEXO updates. Last month, I attended a meeting with Tim McGrath and Kathy Scanlon from the finance office. It was split into one part for food service agencies and one part for administrative officials, and the main gist of the meeting essentially was recognizing and including the culture of students in your district in your menu. Johnson &amp; Wales, who hosted the program, took the top four ethnic groups in the state, which is the Dominican Republic, Cuba, Mexico, and Puerto Rico, and while Mr. McGrath and Ms. Scanlon and I learned about kind of boring things about how to integrate, negotiate contracts and work within schools to implement wellness programs, the food service workers were having a chopped competition in the kitchen where they had to create a dish based on these four cultures, and they turned out the most beautiful meals that you would have ever seen in a school cafeteria. There was one that was like half of a pineapple filled with chicken, but they implemented these cultures into the meals while still staying within all the strict standards of whole grains and reduced sodium and sugar limits to kind of create that and see what could be brought to the different communities. Going off of that, there is also a program that was introduced called Students Take Charge, which we actually feel on the committee will fold really nicely in with the K-5 health curriculum next year, after we give it a year to kind of work in. It's designed for 5th graders, and there is an eight-week program on nutrition literacy where students can actually bring in recipes from home, and they get voted on, and there's a taste test that everyone goes to, including school committee, in the classes, and then the winning recipe is included on the menu. So it's really kind of giving students a voice and some buy-in in the nutrition. Just the last two things. The update on the recycling rangers at Garvin, it is going very well, and after last week, after only a few weeks, they had already diverted 2,000 pounds of food waste with the recycling. And the last one, just a few updates on what's happened since beginning our composting project on, at CHS McCourt and North, and this was just shared by Clipper Eats yesterday. From a greenhouse gas perspective, it is the equivalent of having planted 39 seedlings for 10 years. It has offset driving 5,959 miles. It is 6,007 pounds of food scraps diverted from the landfill, and it has offset the use of 270 gallons of gas by diverting those scraps from the landfill. So that's just what's happened so far with that program that we have kicked in this year, so it's pretty impressive and really great. And we're not done for the year, and we will come back in August.
Thank you, Ms. Rogalski. Next on the agenda is comments from the public. So if you've been here before, you know how this works. You come up to the microphone, state your name and your address, and there's a three-minute time limit. And so if there's anybody from the public who would like to speak, come on down, Mrs. Carslin.
I'm the ICSI president. I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself. I have three children and two stepchildren, 26 years old, all the way down to 14. I grew up in Cumberland. I graduated from Cumberland High School. I've been employed by the Cumberland School Department for a total of 15 years. I have been a paraprofessional for 12 years and a building secretary for three. My father also worked in the Cumberland School Department until his retirement. He was a custodian. All my children attended the school department here in their younger years, and to say that the Cumberland School Department and the ICSI Union are near and dear to me is a major understatement. I've seen the Cumberland School Department at its very, very best and witnessed its struggles at times. Unfortunately, at this time, I believe our support staff is struggling in a major way, and it's due to the unacceptable wages that we have at this time and non-competitive wages, and we're really struggling in that area. The school department has always been a place that I've been very proud to say I worked for. It was known for hiring the most qualified candidates and a place where you could make a fair living and wage, make a difference in lives of children. That's what we're all here for. Please note that I had to use that in past tense at this time. That's because with benefits being stripped from our packages and wages diminishing, it's very hard to stay competitive and get the best candidates that we could possibly get to work for our school department. ICSI is made up of many classifications. We have custodians, paraprofessionals, electricians, plumbers, carpenters, secretaries, clerks, accountants, payroll, you name it, we're an ICSI. So we're detrimental to making the school department work as a whole. Over the past few years, just when we think we can't be stretched any thinner, something comes along to make sure that we are. More students, bigger buildings, more severe behaviors, struggles, that we all rise to the occasion to fill holes, fill gaps, and get the jobs done. We're one of the few districts in the state where enrollment continues to rise, yet we're not adding enough support staff to the, for the academic and social, emotional, and behavioral needs of these students. We are expanding our schools, but we have only three maintenance people to keep these schools running and to maintain. We have these beautiful new properties, new additions to our schools, and we just don't have the manpower and the staff to keep them beautiful and to be proud of them. We need to keep nine schools running. Three people just can't cut it. Members of the ICSI Union have to work two jobs or seek employment in other towns. Some have had to find alternate professions because we're just feeling the effects of persistent pay gaps and are unable to make ends meet. Over the years, ICSI contracts tend to focus on one classification at a time, and you heard how many that we have, many, many classifications. To focus on just one area of that, it just makes it impossible to stay up with inflation and other needs. Due to this, the other classifications are put on hold for sometimes six years or maybe even nine years, since we negotiate every three. So with all those classifications, it can be a very long time before your classification actually sees, you know, a decent amount in your hourly pay. You know, kind of in the ICSI Union, we kind of hear the term, it'll be your turn or when your turn comes. And that's very hard. Who can wait six to nine years to see anything decent in their paycheck? When they do finally see an hourly increase, it's absorbed by the working rate of health I have employees who have shown me their paychecks from previous years where their previous year paycheck is higher than the current year. So even if we might get a 2% raise in our annual contract, it eats up that cost of living. It doesn't stay the same, so you actually end up making less when you've been considered to have a raise. That's unacceptable. Consistently, the cost of living raise percentage has not been more than 2%. Unfortunately, in some years, we've actually seen zero. An average hourly rate for many support staff is roughly $20.50. 2% of that is 41 cents, so that's what you'd see in your hourly wage. That's not including license numbers, but the average of our staff, like in the $20 range, 2% of that is not enough. Working rate increases more than that annually, and that's how we end up seeing that, the less in your paycheck. With these non-competitive wages, staff are unable to support themselves fairly. Staff are stressed because of the financial hardships, inflation, and being stretched too far. I know the Cumberland School Department can be the most desirable school department to seek employment in. It can be, and it has been a place to be proud to work for and a place to support, that support staff can feel respected both financially and professionally. I would like to thank you for taking the time to listen to me and hope that you support that we are asking for what we need to move forward and be the best that we can be to support our school department that we know can be the best it can be. Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Carrie Carlson. I reside on Newell Drive. I'm a school counselor and a teacher at McCourt Middle School and president of the Cumberland Teachers Association. It is no secret to anyone in this room that school funding is a challenge. In order to support the school funding effort, union members have taken many actions over the past several months. We have, we had hundreds of members from Cumberland and around the state lobby at the State House, testified hearings, contacted their reps and senators about the school funding formula, and we were successful, meaning Cumberland Schools will now have an additional $660,000 in state aid next year. That additional aid is to help us do our jobs educating our students. Our enrollment is increasing, and that is thanks to all of our hard work. We know the school committee also lobbied for this extra funding, but it was our members who put in the legwork. We have funding because of all of our members together in our union and the fight we fought at the State House. That money needs to be used to settle fair contracts so we can attract and retain high-quality teachers and support staff and meet the diverse and varied needs of our students. We've been negotiating in good faith since January, and we've made progress on many issues. However, we still have many outstanding issues and concerns. Many members of the CTA are here tonight to let you know that we need to use those additional monies available to us to reach an agreement and settle our contract. We want and need a fair contract that allows us to address many of the challenges we're facing, including, but not limited to, significant learning loss, varied and diverse student needs, skyrocketing childhood and adolescent mental health needs, social and emotional skill deficits, chronic student absenteeism, significant increases in student discipline, socioeconomic inequality, and the inability to attract and retain educators resulting in unfilled positions. Let's settle a contract that takes a big step forward to address these challenges and the learning needs of our students. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I am at U of Shuppick. I am in kindergarten in Mrs. C.'s class at Garvin School. She helped me all to learn all the high-frequency words. She is the best teacher, and she also helped me with the kindergarten high-frequency words. She is the best teacher on the whole entire earth. She is nice. She is a great teacher. She is, wait, no. Keep the hard work, Mrs. C. Thank you at U.
And I don't think I could say it any better, but my name is Megan Hennessy-Green. I'm of Heinz Road. I have three children in the Cumberland School Department, one at the high school, one at McCourt Middle School, and one at Garvin. My two daughters are here with me this evening, who both had the pleasure of being in Mrs. C.'s kindergarten classroom. So I wanted to take a moment this evening to comment on the impact that my children's time in Mrs. Campo Piano's kindergarten classroom has had. It's remarkable how those early years of schooling shape their understanding of the world. Kindergarten isn't just about learning ABCs and 1-2-3s. It's about socialization, creativity, and discovery. It's where they learn to interact with others, share, and collaborate. These fundamental skills are invaluable and continue to shape our relationships and interactions as we grow. From a parent's perspective, full-day kindergarten is the first time some of our children have been away from us for six-plus hours. As soon as we met Mrs. C., we knew they were in good hands. My children speak so fondly of their time with Mrs. C. She showers her students with boundless enthusiasm and affection. We still, to this day, sing Days of the Week with an occasional "Oh, my stars!" and a firecracker cheer, and her wardrobe and shoe style is on point. The impact of a good kindergarten teacher extends far beyond the classroom, shaping their academic success, social, emotional well-being, and lifelong love of learning and skills. Mrs. C.'s dedication, passion, and skillful instruction have laid the foundation for future success and contribute to building a brighter future for my children and others that were lucky enough to have been her students. In my opinion, there is no teacher more deserving of this accolade, and it's wonderful to see her acknowledged with this award. Congratulations.
If there's anyone else from the public who would like to speak? Just state your name and your address. Thank you.
I'm Dylan Eng. I'm a school psychologist for Cumberland Schools. I work, I live in Fort Corrin Road. That's kind of behind Fatima for people who know that place. I think in the past few years, we have had really a staggering number of, over at the preschool combined with the other schools that I support, I've had probably around 80 to 90 referrals a year that have resulted in evaluation. So we're really seeing quite a lot of need now, and I think one of the things that, with that staggering thing, we need people. We need people to really come up and work. And I think one of the really tricky things is for school psychologists. We have a lot of different jobs out there, and it's very difficult to find people who are willing to go, come and work at a school. We, there's like other people who go clinical, and in my own group of people who I've, who I studied with, I'm probably one of the only people I know of who's still working in a school. I think we really, we really need to make sure that we meet that need. With the exceptional students that we have, we really need to make sure that we are able to attract the exceptional people who come to work with them. I often tell a lot of our students that they're all leaders here. I see a few of them actually in our, in our room today. They, I, it's, one of the things that we think about sometimes is here at school, it's not just that we're teaching our kids math, reading, all of these subjects. We're teaching them how to become leaders. We're teaching them how to become citizens. I didn't come and I don't work in this school because I want to earn the money. I'm here because I care about my town. I'm here because, I left and I came back here. I came here to, and it's because I care about my town. I want, I really want to see those citizens and that leadership we have, and this is what it comes down to. So, thank you.
Any other comments from the public? I just want to say that this may be the first school committee meeting in eight years where I have gotten goosebumps, and my eyes have filled up with tears hearing the stories from Mrs. C. and Mr. Zasko. And I know each of you as educators have your own stories like that, and it is wonderful to hear. And that is the reason why we are all here, to make an impact to the future, I don't know, CEOs of, of America. So thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. And I want to say it's wonderful to see everyone, and we'd love to see you more often. I had special events during the school committee meetings. It's great to have a full house. Thank you, everyone. Now we're moving to old business. Item A, discussion and/or vote on the proposed start and end times for 2024-2025 school year.
Madam Chair, good evening. We're still not looking for a vote tonight, just more, just an update. As you may recall, last month, we talked about a potential way to have the same start times but change our end times and get back our common playing time, or CPT, as you recall. But I also mentioned, I believe, last month, the idea that we had given our state reps language to get back what we had previously, the one-hour release on Wednesday. And as you may recall, RIDE had said we couldn't do that anymore. So the update is, the State House has moved our bill forward. It actually hit the floor, I guess, yesterday. And as I understand it, it's up for a final vote probably tomorrow or early next week. So what that means is, in our meeting next week on the 13th, I'm hoping to be able to tell you that the law has changed, and we can revert back to what we had before with the early release Wednesday. So just stay tuned until next week, and I'll probably update you on the 13th, on that.
Okay, so no vote tonight because there's more to come?
More to come.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for your commitment to that, Dr. Thornton. Item B, discussion and/or vote on revised 2024-2025 school calendar to add RIDE-approved waivers of the three inclement weather days.
Right. As you may recall, we approved the calendar on March 28th. RIDE has approved our ability to waive three inclement weather days, given we have so many instructional minutes over the minimum. So if you approve this tonight, we can in fact not make up three inclement weather days next year.
So the pleasure of the committee on this item.
Motion to approve.
Mrs. Rogalski makes a motion to approve the revised 2024-2025 school calendar. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Smith. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes four to zero. Yes. Next item, discussion and/or vote on the 2024-2025 budget.
Madam Chair, I can start, and Tim will help me with this piece. As you know, the town has adopted their budget. You also know the state has changed their, their funding stream for, for the schools. So with that, we want to talk about, you know, where we are right now in terms of revenue and all that type of thing. So Mr. McGrath, if you could take over, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school committee. As the superintendent indicated, we now know where the town stands and the state stands. So at this time, we've presented you with an adjustment to the budget to memorialize those changes in revenue. So you'll see that the revenue from the town has decreased by $300,000 to a little over $50 million. The state aid has increased by, it was 660 from the state. We had expected 100,000 of that, so the overall increase to the budget's 560. We would reduce the use of fund balance in this model by $71,000. It would be a decrease in the 5100 by that $300,000 that the town cut. And we also need to increase a bond lease payment that the town has passed on to us of $488,000. So that's all memorialized in the documents presented, and that locks us into the revenue, the known revenues from the states and the town.
So one of the things that we need to do tonight to kind of level set our budget based off of all of the changes that Mr. McGrath just mentioned, is we do need to go through this process of voting on moving where some of the money is. So the pleasure of the committee related to the items that Mr. McGrath just mentioned.
Okay, I'd like to move to decrease object 4120, sorry, 41210, the revenue by 300,000 to a total of $50,99,525.
Mrs. Rogalski makes a motion to decrease item 41210 by 300,000. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Smith. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes four to zero. You said aye, right?
I did.
Okay. You want to keep going?
Sure. I'd like to make another motion to increase on line item 41211, state aid by 560,563 for a total of $26,537,195.
Mrs. Rogalski makes a motion to increase line item 41211 by 560,563. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes four to zero.
I'd like to make further motion to decrease line item 41250, use of fund balance by $71,787.35 for a total of $12,212.65.
Mrs. Rogalski makes a motion to decrease line item 41250, use of fund balance by $71,787.35. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes four to zero.
I'd like to make a motion to decrease line item 51110 by 300,000 to a total of
Mrs. Rogalski makes a motion to decrease line item 51110 by 300,000. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes four to zero.
And I'd like to make a motion to increase slash add the line item 58311, which is our bond and lease payment, by $488,775.
Mrs. Rogalski makes a motion to increase line item 58311 by $488,775. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes four to zero. So that was just the work we had to do to get the budget to match up with what we know now of revenue and expenses. We, now knowing what the numbers are that we have, then allows us to make further decisions about where, how we allocate that money. And so tonight, it's not on our agenda to, well, there is a vote on this. We have, but I, I believe we're voting on this at the next meeting to talk about more of the specifics, or can we vote on this now that we've got the money into the right places?
I believe you'd vote on the budget as amended, and then we'd move forward from there, amending the budget as needed.
And then talk about the details?
I move to, to approve the amended budget, the budget as amended.
Mrs. Rogalski makes a motion to approve the budget as amended. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Collins. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes four to zero. Any further discussion tonight on the budget? I believe at our next meeting, we were going to get into more of the details once we've had a chance to look at all of these changes that we just voted on. Thank you. Then we're going to move on to new business. And I just want to say for the record to, you know, the school committee's work all happens here in our school committee meeting. And so we need this information. We get this information tonight. We saw it tonight for the first time. And then we'll continue to work on it and be able to talk more about it at the next meeting, just so you can see how that works. Next item is new business. Item A, discussion and/or vote to authorize the superintendent to bind the committee to change orders of up to $25,000 per change order on current construction projects. Said authorization shall be granted through August 31st, 2024 unless renewed or terminated by the committee.
Madam Chair, the goal here is to keep the process moving along. There are occasions where we have to make a decision to do a, a change order or pay a few extra dollars to get something done. For example, the Ashton boilers, we had to make a change in what we're going to do. That'll require like an $11,000 change order. If I have this ability, I can move it along and authorize it, come back and report to you, but still keep the project moving along. Right now, we've kind of looked at this, not having this, and it kind of slows us down having a separate meeting to wait for that process. So we're looking with, with our counselor's advice, if we could, you know, have this not go past August 31st, 2024, just a short period of time, so I can expedite the Ashton change orders that are under 25K.
I just want to add too, you know, I'm, I'm the first person. I, I'd like additional oversight of the finances as opposed to under oversight, but I actually agree with this. This is pretty consistent with, there was supposed to be, the charter commission was discussing raising the bar. Because right now, for the public, anything over $5,000 requires a resolution. So we have 13 resolutions ahead of us, unless we have an existing contract or whatever. So it's basically to protect the taxpayers from the government, the, the, the school department just spending, absorbing amounts of money. So I think it's actually a good idea. And plus, there's already added oversight with the building committee, and we have owner's representation who will approve anything that's coming out of the bond anyway. We'll make this suggestion. So I'm very comfortable with this, just to keep the ball rolling because, you know, we've been through enough of these projects now where we know we got a, any sort of stoppage can affect the opening of school. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve the authorization of the superintendent to change orders of up to $25,000 per change order on current construction projects granted through August 31st, 2024 unless renewed or terminated by the committee. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rogalski. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes four to zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, new business, update on collective bargaining negotiations.
Just very briefly, Madam Chair, we continue to meet with ICSI and CTA on a weekly basis. I remain very encouraged. We'll get both these contracts done in a short order. That's
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. I'm, I'm glad to hear that the negotiations are getting us where we need to get to. And yeah, so that'll happen soon, hopefully. Next item, C, discussion and/or vote to approve homeschool instruction requests for the 2023-2024 school year. There aren't any. There aren't any. Moving on to item D, discussion and/or vote to approve resolutions. Mr. Collins.
That's right. Thanks for sticking around. We have 13 resolutions, SCPI-06-2024-73 through number 85. All 13 resolutions passed fiscal management subcommittee two to zero, and I'd move passage to the full committee.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve resolutions, SCPR-06-2024-73 through 85. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rogalski. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes four to zero. Next item, discussion and/or vote to approve payment of bills. Mr. Collins.
That's right. Payment of the bills, the amount of $1,274,472.83. Payment of the bills passed fiscal management subcommittee two to zero, and I'd move passage to the full committee.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve payment of bills. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Smith. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That passes four to zero. Next item on the agenda, school committee comments, school liaison reports. Mr. Collins?
Actually, I have a couple here. This one, first of all, we, I just received a letter to the school. I don't, it was waiting for me when I got here tonight. Alpha Delta Kappa, Cumberland's Etachap, I'm not a, I don't know if there's any Greek life people in here. I don't really understand it, but...
Ada.
Fair enough. Ada. This is a, this is a sorority, an international sorority not affiliated with any college. Long story short, this letter was sent to me by Kathleen Darby announcing that two teachers, Amanda Zipkak, I don't know if either one is here, Zipzak? Sorry, did I pronounce that correctly?
Zipkak.
All right. You were awarded $237 to purchase sensory materials to help these special education students in a, in a community school. And Kerry Marshall, I don't know if, oh, well, you can text her and let her know that she was awarded $240. I don't know why she got $3 more, but... 230. Next year, everybody asks for 240. You'll get it. She, to purchase Legos to utilize as a modern medium for printmaking in her visual art classes. So at BF Norton and Garvin, it's a small dollar mod, this is signed by Kathleen Darby. I, once I got this, I emailed her, thanked her, and I let her know that I would be announcing this. So it's small money, but it's a kind gesture. So hopefully it helps out. And if you need the extra $3, I'm sure we can take a collection for you.
[laughing]
The only other thing I want to say is Ms. Palazzo. So, excuse me. So my children had you. So as I listen to Ms. Carter and everybody talking about this, one of the hardest things, I think, if there are parents in here sending your kids off to kindergarten. So when we had the open house at Garvin, I remember meeting you, and I remember telling my wife, it'll be okay. So they're in high school now, and actually Nora's about to get a driver's license, but they still talk about you. So thank you very much. Couple of years, I'll be graduating. They're walking through two different schools. So thank you for all you've done. And I saw it firsthand, so congratulations.
I didn't actually prepare a list, but just a few things. First, a big thank you to all of our educators and our parent professionals and our custodians and our chanders and our everybody for getting us through the school year, and all your hard work does not go unseen. As we reach the end of the school year, the next meeting will be after the end of the school year. And as I prepare to graduate my first child from Cumberland Schools, I appreciate all of you more than you could ever possibly know. The teachers and the, just the interactions over the past 13 years have been amazing and wonderful, and you have all helped shape him to be who he is. And so it is very, very appreciated. And I believe that probably all of the parents of the senior class could say the same thing. So thank you for everything that you do. Next, congratulations to all of the graduates. It's very exciting, very nerve-wracking, but it's exciting. And last, just congratulations to all of our sports teams and all of the various athletes that have achieved some really incredible things this year. So that's it.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you. I'd like to echo what Mrs. Rogalski said, and I want to also add in, Mrs. Vogel and I attended the scholarship awards banquet last week. And again, I was just completely blown away by the amount of students getting these awards and then the amount of the awards. And more so, the junior class, and the amount of awards that were handed out to the juniors, and they were in very high dollar amounts. Quite a few of them were four years of college being given if they go and attend to certain colleges with all their expenses paid. So congratulations to all of the scholarship winners, and we wish you best of luck in your endeavors in college for all you seniors going on your way.
Back to Mrs. Rogalski.
I'm sorry, that just reminded me, one more thing I want to say. We don't often recognize a lot of academic achievements here at the meetings. We recognize a lot of sports, but just know that we do see you, and we know what your academic achievements are for all the students in the district. And it's really impressive when you do go to those nights and when you see what the students are doing. And so just big congrats to all
This has been such a wonderful evening. I hate for it to end. Any other comments from the school committee? Okay, next item is a vote to go into executive session. Do we have that tonight, Dr. Thornton?
We do not.
So the next item begrudgingly is adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mrs. Rogalski. Second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? We're adjourned at 8:17 PM. Thank you, everyone.